Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Rusty Stowe is here with the Exchange Avenue Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman James Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray together. Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be able to experience the beauty of one more day and for this opportunity to try to make a difference in someone's life today. Father, this morning, I pray for the men and women of this council that you would bless them as they carry out their duties as they try to serve the citizens of Oklahoma City. Father, I pray for their families as they support them in this role. And Lord, we just pray for clarity and we pray for understanding in any decision that needs to be taken care of today. Father, we just pray that your presence would be in this room. Lord, we thank you for how you've blessed us as a nation. We thank you how you've blessed us as a city. We just pray you can have your continual blessings upon us as we live to serve you each day, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Item 3 is to an appointment on the golf commission.
Move it on.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 13th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 30th. We have a most and a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, on page 21, page 21, under item 8D, SPUD 706, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the September 10th meeting. Again, item 86, SPUD 706, until September 10th. Moving to page 22, under item 8I1, item B, requested to be stricken. The owner has removed. Item H, 1725 Northwest 7th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to page 23, item K, 604 Southwest 30th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to item 8J1, item D, 8808, Hallbrook Manor, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item K, 3206 Pioneer Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N, 1300 South Robinson, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 8817 South Chertel, we ask that that be stricken. That's now occupied. Item W, 3909 Northwest 19th, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item CC, 3225 Northwest 31st, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item EE, 932 Southwest 34th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item FF, 1718 Northeast 34th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item HH, 2334 Southwest 39th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item JJ, 9 Southwest 43rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item KK, 2613 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item LL, 1800 Northeast 48th Street, we ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied. Item NN, 1821 Northeast 54th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, OO401 Northwest 118th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other comments or questions on the uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are five items. Any comments here on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a question on MFA 1, and it's two road projects, and one of them is 150th Street from Redian to MacArthur. And I'm curious if we could get a time on that, then an update if we could from ODOT on what their plans are on 74th Street, because this project is important in that regards. They need to mesh together somehow. As they extend Highway 74 north, we need to make sure that our streets are compatible with the ODOT's plan.
I think we've been coordinating with them, Mr. Ryan, but we'll get a report back to you on that.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions on the MFA?
Mayor?
Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two brief comments on item A, if I could. Item A involves two road projects. One is doing some advanced engineering and design work on Morgan Road, widening it from Southwest 29th to Southwest 44th. And this is a way that we can get some of the engineering work done, that should the bond money in the next year or two come available, this project will be ready to be worked on. And I know the neighbors out there are very excited about having that widened. The second one deals with, I thought it was also Morgan Road, I mean, the item on MacArthur in Ward 3, and it's not A, I guess I've got the wrong number. Is Eric, could Eric come in a minute? Here. Eric, which item is it that we're doing with ACOG on MacArthur from Reno to 10th?
It's actually just a little bit later in the agenda. Let me see if I can find the item number for you here.
I'm sorry.
I believe it's 6AE. No, hang on, I don't know that that's AD. That's Wilshire. Hang on.
6AD? 6AD?
It's not it. I'll locate it here in just a minute and get you updated.
It's on the consent docket?
It's in the agenda. Yeah, it's either items for separate.
I apologize. We'll get it.
I'll find it here in just a minute.
Thank you, Your Honor.
How about a motion on the MFA?
Eric, do you know the vehicle per day counts on these widening's?
I don't, but I'd be happy to get them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cast your votes on the MFA. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a couple minor questions on A. 6A, 6V, as in Victor. 6AB. That's all, ma'am.
All right, Larry?
AD.
Okay.
Mayor, I did have a couple. 6L, 6P and Q, 6U2, 6AA, and 6AQ. I think that'll do it.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, 6L.
All right. Pat, you want to get started with A?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a quick question. What does the city use as closed-circuit TV capabilities for? This is a $100,000 project relating to that, and I was curious what they use it for.
Craig, can you answer that?
This is on the closed-circuit TV cameras.
Of the place?
How they're used. And this is just like the maintenance agreement.
I understand. What do they use the system for?
The system's actually used throughout the city as security, but it's placed in different locations. And so we use it. We have security on some buildings, but also in different areas of the city. So it's security.
Security system, information communication. Okay, thank you.
Pat, item V?
V is in Victor. Your Honor, thank you. This is a project that deals with some replacement of a part of the roof design of our new patient's lighting library. Some of the glass, Eric's, on top of the roof blew down during the storm. And does this project reinforce those at all? So are we getting a better product as we put it back up, or are we have the same possibility in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. The damages that were incurred were obviously due to the storms. It's our intent to put back a system that was equal to what was lost. Obviously, trying to design something for severe winds is something that we can take into account, but I do know that they're looking at that, yes.
They are looking at.
They're looking at a different attachment method for some of the panels that were lost, yes.
And the final question, Your Honor, is on item AB, Alpha Bravo. And this one is a project, it's a street project, 178th Pennsylvania to May, and it calls for sidewalks on both sides of the street. And I wonder why we don't make that a sort of a standard. I know it's more expensive, but it makes, seems to me immense sense to have sidewalks on both sides of the street.
We've talked about that in the past. The issue is when we did the '07 bond issues, we only budgeted for the one side of the street. In future bond issues, we could budget for both sides of the streets and do that.
I think we ought to have some long-range plan to go to both sides of the.
Councilman Greenwell's brought that up several times in the past.
Thank you.
Larry, AD?
Yeah, AD is the item that I was trying to find earlier under the MFA. Several weeks ago, I announced to the residents out in this area that MacArthur was going to be resurfaced from 30th to 36th Street. However, upon further review, it was determined that, I mean, excuse me, from 23rd to 30th, on further review, it was determined that the stretch of road that really needed the resurfacing was the one from Reno to 10th Street. ACOG money is involved, and so in order to participate with ACOG in this, we're redoing the initiative, if you will, and the resurfacing will be done from Reno to 10th instead of the previously announced one. And because this is an ACOG project and not general obligation bond monies, there are no sidewalks involved in this. It's just strictly resurfacing. So we have different projects, we can do different things on. It's a ways move this very heavily-used traffic area out. It's the entranceway to the Westgate Shopping Area, and it's also used by many FAA people from the north getting down to FAA. So thank you, Eric, for your staff's work on this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Meg, item L?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled so many of these out today is that this agenda is just packed full of things that we're doing in all of our neighborhoods, citywide, and so I just wanted to mention a couple of those things. 6L is our contract with Neighborhood Alliance, and we've done this for nine years to help our neighborhoods with capacity building and building strong neighborhoods and helping to create neighborhood leaders, and they do a wonderful job, and I just wanted to recognize that. 6P is the assessment role, and it's actually 6P and Q, and this is the assessment role for Stockyards. And I just want to remind everybody that Stockyards was the very first urban Main Street program in the city. It's been a tremendous success, and we just continue to see development efforts and building activity going on. It's such a unique part of our community, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing in Stockyards. 6U2 is the resurfacing project in Heritage Hills, and I want to thank all the neighbors for their tolerance. It's been a little rough trying to get around Heritage Hills, but we're moving on toward completion, and I did just want to mention to the city manager, Eric, we do have some manhole cover issues still. We've got some places that it's a little bit dangerous, and so if we can just keep an eye on how that project is finishing up.
As we finish this up, we'll make sure those manholes get adjusted.
It's beginning to look really good. 6AA is our contract, and the design completion is underway with our intelligent transportation system, and this is another project that addresses every traffic signal within all of our city limits. It should be a great improvement for all of our neighborhoods. And then 6AQ, and one, is Phase 2 of the trail improvements that are parts of MAPS 3. And this particular phase has been broken up into three segments, and these improvements will be made in Ward 2 and in Ward 6. So I just wanted to highlight all of those. Thank you.
John, item L?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take the time out to thank Neighborhood Alliance for their leadership and what they do for its neighborhoods and our city, especially in the Strong Neighborhood Initiative program. I have been to several meetings within the two, I have two wards. Seven has two Strong Neighborhood Initiative programs, and those meetings that I have attended have been well-attended, and I do believe that the residents in those areas are truly getting something out of our Strong Neighborhood program. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Neighborhood Alliance.
Mayor, we should probably also highlight item AM. AM is a budget amendment. I know Mr. McAtee's asked me about this about five times, about how are we doing on fund balance, and are we going to be able to do some more projects with that? And so Doug, if you'd want to just highlight the budget amendment that's being introduced today, it'll be voted on in two weeks.
Yes, City Manager and Mayor and Council, the interim financial report that's at the end of the agenda under City Manager Reports indicates that we finished up FY13 in a good position, and we're beginning FY14 with an unreserved fund balance of 16.2%. So that's above our policy range of 8 to 15%. So we're recommending that $8 million of that fund balance be transferred to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund from the General Fund for use on capital projects in each of the wards. In the past, that's been street resurfacing and drainage projects, those types of projects. So if that is adopted, that would leave our unbudgeted reserve at 14.1% of the General Fund budget, which again fits within that 8 to 15% range for unreserved fund balance. We've also got some other changes that are in the amendment as well. The CIP fund is, of course, going to be amended for that $8 million being transferred in, but we also have $12.8 million coming from the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust for improvements at the Amateur Softball Association Hall of Fame Stadium. These improvements are required in order to secure a longer-term commitment from the NCAA for Oklahoma City to continue to host the Women's College World Series. The trust will be paid back through naming rights, revenue, private contributions, general city revenues over the number of years there. The CIP fund is also being amended, excuse me, to provide authority for asbestos abatement, carpet replacement and carpet replacement at the Cox Convention Center, as well as authority for repairs at the Chesapeake Energy Arena after the flooding from the May 30th storms. Those three changes total about $1.5 million. So in total, the CIP fund is being increased by $22.3 million. And then the Special Purpose Fund is where we handle donations or dedicated funding so we can ensure that those funds are spent on the intended purpose. We have two changes there. The first is to handle a donation of about $175,000 from Continental Resources for construction of a pavilion at Bluff Creek Park. That donation was received near the end of last fiscal year, so we didn't get that included in the budget. That's being added here. And the second change is to handle $388,000 from the Oklahoma City Airport Trust to supplement bond funds and widening of South Portland Avenue. This is part of the master plan at the airport and the east-side development at Will Rogers World Airport. This will supplement bond funds, and that way it's all in the city. City funds will be used for that, but again, we can guarantee that the Airport Trust, that those funds will be used just for that project because it's in the Special Purpose Fund. So the total being added to the budget through the amendment is $22.9 million. This will bring the total city budget to $1,507,978. So the amendment's being introduced today. In two weeks, it'll be up for a vote for final adoption. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? All right, Doug, thank you. Are we ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to the concurrence docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
All right, any individual considerations here? All right, sounds like we're good to go. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to Section 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with an ABC issue in Ward 2. The address is 3608 North May, Suite A. Ed?
Anybody here signed up to speak on this? Had unanimous approval? The planning commission, no protests, so I move for approval.
Okay. Anyone here to comment or questions on this item?
Oh, okay.
I'm asking for the ABC.
Yeah, we'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm at Bays, and my address is 3608 North May Avenue.
All right, I think we're about to vote in favor of this. Are you here to, are you asking for the zoning change?
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm asking for the permission to have a legal license for my, for 36th.
Yeah, if you'd stand in front of the microphone, I might be able to hear you a little better.
I'm here to ask.
Are you the applicant applying for this?
Yes, I'm the applicant.
Okay, we're getting ready to vote and pass what you're hoping to get accomplished. So you don't always help yourself by speaking.
I'm so sorry.
We've had people that wish they hadn't spoke in situations like this.
I'm very sorry.
All right, are we ready to go? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you and good luck.
She'd like to ask for the emergency. That's what she was trying to do.
Wonderful. Why don't you go back to the microphone? I'm sorry, I didn't understand it more clearly the first time.
That's why I came to the microphone, to ask for the.
You asked for the emergency?
Yes.
Okay, how about a motion on the emergency? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 2101 North Sierra Road. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it's a PUD, and it would become an R2 medium-low-density residential district. James?
That one's.
I think it's being deferred.
It's being deferred, it's a residential.
Great. Okay, so item 8A2 has been deferred until September 10th. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 641 Northwest 164th Street. It's a PUD, and it's going to become a new plan unit development. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. Mayor members, Council Brian Coon, representing the applicant. My applicant is here with us today. You heard this about a month ago, and the councilman asked us to continue it. I had some protests from the property owners to the east. My client has been working almost daily with them to work out some solutions and compromises. We've done that, and so I'm here today asking for your approval, but I also need to enter some things for the record, just so we can get those changed. We have a new site plan. I don't know if you can see it very well, but what we've done essentially is change this building to two-story, which is what they were really after, the main thing, and then this piece back here is three-story. We moved all the parking over here. These are offices over here, so we got them away from the houses. A couple things just for the record, and then I'll leave it with staff. Our list of items, list of outside materials, we restricted that to brick, masonry, rock, and stone. We're going to make every attempt we can to not cut down any of the trees in the creeks. We're also going to construct the sidewalk as far as we can east to west. There's a sidewalk on the bridge on the west side, so we'll construct it to that. And then there's a little bit of sidewalk that doesn't connect to the sidewalk to the neighborhood to the east, and we will do that. And then also just committing that that one building I showed you will be two-story. The balance will be three-story. Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
No, I've got a question.
Okay, Pat?
Is there any federal money involved in this project?
No.
The owners can restrict it to seniors only?
Yes, and it's in the PUD.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I want to thank you, Brian, for working with the neighborhoods, of course. This particular PUD had large, well, had some protests, and Brian and the developer was able to work out those differences with the protesters. So again, thank you, Brian, for doing that. So I move for approval.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8B is a special use permit. First, we need to amend the conditions of the special use permit. We'll be voting, I guess, three times on this. A, B, 1, 2, and then C.
Why don't we have Bob go through the specifics of each of the items? It's related. It's one property with three different actions required. This is a little bit unique to the council.
Right. And C is the ABC part of it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I see.
Item number one is just amending the special permit ordinance. There were some technical evaluations recommended, and they weren't in the original special permit, so item one adds those. Item two is the actual hearing on the item, and then item three is the ABC. This is a proposed driving range with restaurant, and it has the ability, they have individual driving spaces where they can serve alcohol, beer in those areas, and food. So it's a rather large facility, but it's all based on golfing and the driving range.
You like?
Could I ask? Are there plans for the area that's on the north side of this? It's just kind of blank.
Probably should ask the applicant.
Mayor, members of council, Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. To answer your question, this is a 24-acre tract, and it's anticipated that the area shown in the subject site will be the area that will be part of the driving range, and no, we do not have any plans for the area on the north. That's just part of our property we're purchasing. This is an example of, you see a number of different entertainment venues around the country. This is a group of local investors, and this will be very unique, but this is something that you'll see in your larger communities, and we're excited to bring it to Oklahoma City.
Not to be critical of the design, but you know, people that may not be great golfers tend to have a slicing problem, and the ball's going to be going to the right. I would just think the design might better accommodate that, but.
We'll have all the necessary fencing to make sure if I'm out there, people are protected.
Want helmets out there?
Any other comments or questions on this item?
Thank you.
All right, so we're voting first on item 8B1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. How about a motion then on 8B2?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 8C is the ABC aspect of the same development. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D has been deferred until September 10th. Item 8E is an ordinance that would clean up some of our language on front yard parking, and this is the final hearing on this item today. Is anyone here hoping to speak on item 8E today? All right, council's been briefed on it. Are we ready to go? All right.
Your Honor, I want to ask you a related question. It's not directly as opposed to this ordinance, but it's similar. We have an awful lot of scrap paper collection facilities scattered around the city. Most schools have them, a lot of churches have them, and they're, I think, a real asset to the community. However, they've been allowed to fall into disrepair. They've been painting or rusty. Some of them have been run into by trucks or cars, and they're dented. And I think, I know we don't have it covered by a particular ordinance, but I think anything we can do to encourage the owners of these things to do a slightly better job on maintenance would improve the appearance of our city a whole lot.
Cast your votes. 8E passes. Item 8F comes to us from the Traffic Commission. It's some parking situations in Ward A. Pat, you okay with this?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, cast your votes on 8F. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is an item that's being introduced today, and this has to do with electronic bidding. Francis, do you know more about this?
Well, Mayor and Council, on November 5th, we will go live with electronic bidding, and this ordinance will prepare us to be able to do that. This ordinance authorizes the vendors, contractors, and notary to electronically sign the document. So this is provided by federal and state law, so we're really looking forward to this, to the electronic bidding and electronic signatures.
Be interesting to see how this works out.
Yeah.
All right. Have the potential bidders been contacted? And we've.
Actually, we're having user training for procurement vendors next week, and then we're having a separate training for the construction contractors in about a month. We are testing the system and doing the training to prepare for the November 5th live.
Okay.
And we're also working with the Oklahoma Municipal League and the AGC with their organizations to make sure that we get everybody notified.
With their organization to make sure that we get everybody notified.
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody has been notified that there will be training, and it is free. There will be no cost, and they'll be able to access it by going through the Oklahoma City website.
Francis, will this be the only way that people can bid now?
Yes, it will be an electronic system.
Okay.
Yes, totally electronic.
Well, today, we're setting a public hearing on this issue on September 10th, and then the council is expecting to have final adoption on September 24th. How about a motion to this item to be introduced today? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is another item that's being introduced. I think Wendell's going to tell us more about this one.
Good morning, Mayor and council. You have before you today a request to allow us to implement portions of the 1314 budget that's already been adopted by making changes in Section 60 of the municipal code regarding park fees. As you probably all know, a number of years ago, Parks and Recreation Department began reserving facilities for citizens throughout the community at their request. Many years ago, it was a first-come, first-served basis to the facilities. People didn't want us to continue that. They wanted to have reservations and predictability about their use, which, of course, is very reasonable. So we do charge fees for many of our facilities' uses to recover the costs associated with conducting reservation activities, as well as preparing the facilities for that use. In this change in the ordinance, there are changes in the fees for the rental of event centers around the park system, changes in special event fees, the addition of a number of facilities to the ordinance, including the Oklahoma Lions Children Park pavilions, as well as the Continental Resource Pavilion, which is new, the deletion of a couple of pavilions that are no longer useful or used for that purpose, or do not exist in the park any longer, a clarification of an ordinance for Martin Nature Park by just changing a word, which we thought was a bit misleading. It referred to admission fee, which was intended to be a fee for a guided tour. We've changed that to read "tour fee" because we want to make sure the public understood that. We have created a new fee for the delivery of our bleachers, which we rent heavily throughout the community in the metro. If those bleacher rentals and the delivery of them requires that that work be done after hours, therefore overtime paid for the individuals working on it. We've made other minor adjustments in fees. The revenue increases for these changes would be about $27... Pardon me, $26,700. I will mention that the income to the city from all of these fees that we have each year is in excess just a bit of $200,000. So we see this as our way of recouping some of the special costs for these rentals. The ordinance, of course, is being introduced today. The public hearing will be September 10th, and on the 24th, final adoption can take place, and it would take effect on the 24th of October, which, of course, is 30 days later. We're not proposing that it be adopted with an emergency at this time. And I will mention to you that this is a very popular program. Our rentals are rented far in advance. The public really loves these facilities. They're properly priced, well-priced for the use by the public, and well-appreciated and heavily used.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Wendell, one of the philosophies we put in place of use and guidance when we put in these systems is that we're only going to recover our costs?
Yes, sir.
Charging for something, we're actually recovering our costs?
We're not quite there.
But we could, if called upon, we could document the fact.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
But again, these fees won't get us quite to full recovery.
And today, we're setting a public hearing on this item for September 10th, and then the council is expecting to have final adoption on September 24th.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like for you to bring back to us when we come back on the 10th, what it would take to go to full recovery.
Pardon me, sir?
I would like to know what... You say it's not quite to full recovery?
Uh-huh.
I just... I'm not saying I want to go there, but I'd like to know what the difference is between what we are proposing in full recovery.
Okay.
One of the things that came up in this park study that Councilman Ryan and I, and many others have been... And you have been attending with the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, is that our fees are dramatically lower for that service than the surveyed cities that they had. I'm not saying we ought to go up more than we're going up here. I'd just like to know what the gap is.
Okay.
Just for information purposes the next time it comes back.
Pete, you want to make a motion to allow this item to be introduced?
I so move, yes.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is a series of revocable right-of-way permit requests. First is in Ward 7. It's called Walk to End Alzheimer's. Is anyone here representing this event today? Good morning. I will need your name and address for the record.
Sarah Sherry at 2416 Northwest 55th Street, Oklahoma City, 73112. I'm with the Alzheimer's Association. I'm the Walk Coordinator for the Walk to End Alzheimer's, the nation's largest event to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. We will be having the Walk September 21st at the Bricktown Ballpark. We will be assembling at Mickey Mantle Plaza there at the ballpark, with registration and check-in opening at 8:30 in the morning, and we'll start opening ceremonies at 9:35 and kick off the walk promptly at 10 o'clock. It's roughly about 1.7 mile through the Bricktown area, and we're working with the Oklahoma City Police Department to secure the route. I did speak to Lieutenant George this morning, and one of the things she has asked, that we add some barricades at Fourth and Walnut, type 2 barricades at Fourth and Walnut, and they'll barricade at an angle to keep traffic flowing on the other side of the street. And then she also wants to add two barricades at Fourth and Russell and Perry, so there would be no inbound traffic until the tail of the walk curves around, and then the police will open that right back up as soon as the walk goes through.
Okay. It's in Ward 7. John, you okay with this?
It is definitely good to see the walk continue. Alzheimer's, something that is... Issue is dear to my heart, having several family members who have suffered from this disease. I move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8K2 is a request to hold the Andy Payne Memorial Race, and this one will be Ward 4 around Lake Stanley Draper. Is anyone here representing this event?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, and I will need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is John Oslund. I'm with DG Productions, appearing for the Andy Payne Memorial Races, which is a 5K half marathon and full marathon. It's the 36th year of the Andy Payne Memorial Races. The event had four years been held out at Lake Overholser. For the last two years, we've held it at Lake Hefner, and this year, we would like to move the event out to Lake Stanley Draper. DG Productions is a timing and production company, and we work with a number of events that have done... Events out at the Draper facility, primarily triathlons, and we find that facility, traffic-wise and logistically, to be more desirable for the event itself. We do have an amendment to the actual permit that you're looking at right there. City Water and Utilities Trust, we had originally asked for closure of Southwest 104th Street on the loop from the proposed start-finish line down to where the road tees off into the gravel parking lot. They've asked us to relinquish that portion of the closure so that the boats have access in and out of there. They have a soft opening for boats on that weekend. The event is scheduled for Sunday morning at 6:30 a.m. on September 15th, and like I said, we're looking forward to another great event.
Roughly, what is the route for the marathon?
The route does run... It's an out-and-back route clockwise around the lake, on the lake road.
All right, well, it's in Ward 4, Pete.
I have a question. Have you met the lake road from where North Draper Drive joins both East and West Draper That whole strip across the north part is really not in very good shape, the road itself. There have been some... I drive it every day, so I pretty well know it. There's been some recent repairs made to it, but it's... I'd like for, at least for somebody from Public Works to talk to you, for you to get with them between now and then, and see if there's not some minor, almost cosmetic-type repairs that could be made to make it a little safer. It just... It's not... Really not very good shape to try to run on. If you're going to do a bike deal across there, I'd say probably that's a bad idea.
Right.
And we've done some, but the road is just... It's one of those where we put Shinola on top of the sand and call it a road almost. It's really not very much of a road across there.
Right, and I understand. I know many of the bicycling events we do actually go all the way up to 74th Street.
Right.
We had scattered the area, obviously wanted to keep the runners off of that kind of a route, and I know many of the local running groups that are south-side clubs run that route out.
Well, some people run it, but it's pretty... It's not really very conducive to foot traffic. I'm not worried about the cars, I'm worried about just the condition of the road. It's pitted and uneven, and it's not... It's just... If you have... If you're going to use it, I'd like for Public Works to meet with you and see if there's some things you could do...
Certainly.
Or they could do that might make it a smoother surface. I mean, it's just not a...
One of the things we would do, and certainly would be happy to meet with them, but one of the things we had planned to do is...
There's been some work done on it, so it's better today than it was two weeks ago.
Yeah, they did seem to be getting through there and filling in.
But I just... It's a little troublesome to think about people using it as a racecourse.
Okay.
I'm going to move approval, but...
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck. Item 8K3 is a request to hold the Rock the Boat on the Bricktown Canal in Ward 7. And we have someone who signed up to speak. Are you Elizabeth Newton?
I am. Elizabeth Newton, 517 Northwest 48th Street, 73118. I'm with Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, and this is a new event for us this year. We're really excited. It's going to be on the Bricktown Canal, and it's called Rock the Boat, so you can blame us later if that song is stuck in your head for the rest of the day. We're going to be having ACM students performing live on the water taxi boat, so we're going to be encouraging water taxi rides, encouraging people to go to the Bricktown businesses and retail shops. We're going to have caricatures out there, a lot of free activities for families, face painting, things like that, and then we are requesting to close down Wanda Jackson Way to be able to park a snow cone truck, as well as the urban agrarian vehicle, and the Spy FM will be broadcasting live as well, so...
Sounds fun. What day of the week is that?
It is Sunday, September 8, from noon to 6.
All right. How about a motion?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moving for approval.
Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item 8KD is to hold the Wiggle Out Loud event on September 1st. We have one person that signed up to speak, Chris Weiser.
Good morning. Sugar-free All-Stars Chris Weiser, 3604 Northeast 141st Edmond, Oklahoma. I'm here to talk about the Wiggle Out Loud, first-ever Oklahoma Family Music Festival. It's going to be a free event by Centennial Park, right in front of the Civic Center. We're going to have seven bands, local, regional, national, family-oriented groups playing on the main stage. September is National Childhood Obesity Awareness Month, so in addition to the seven bands, we're going to have a number of movement exercise activities going on to help promote healthier lifestyles for families and kids. In addition, we're going to have a number of arts and music-related activities to exercise minds. In addition to the main stage, we're also going to have a community stage, which is going to feature four kids-age groups, including a marimba ensemble, a high school-age rock band from the Lyric Theater, mariachi band from Fillmore Elementary, and a 10-year-old Elvis impersonator. So we were looking at closing the streets around it as an added... Around the park as an added level of safety, since there's going to be a lot of kids running around. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, and he likes to run, so it makes me feel better knowing that those streets are closed around the park, so...
I'm really excited to see you using Bicentennial Park in that way. It's just a great opportunity. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 8K4. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Would you come back to the microphone?
Sure.
I've seen you. I've been to a couple of grade schools where you perform.
At MAPS.
And I want to... I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it. I've seen the kids' reaction to you, and I know... I mean, you're a real hero among grade school children.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And what you've done is really wonderful. I've been two or three times, I've seen you, and you... I can't put it in words really, what I... Faces those kids when you get up and do your show. It's really worthwhile.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I appreciate it personally.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it, and we hope you guys all come, because it's free, 11 to 7. Lots of fun stuff. It's a very adult-friendly kids' festival, so thank you, guys.
I'm putting it in my calendar right now. Item 8L is a revocable permit with the Oklahoma Black Museum and Performing Arts to hold the Multicultural Arts Festival September 6 to the 8th. This is in Ward 2. Ed? No one has signed up. Is anyone here hoping... Yes, okay, great.
Good morning, good afternoon, morning.
Pull the microphone down a little. There you...
My name is Rosetta Funches, and I'm the chairperson for the festival. This is Nyla Blalock. She... I'm mentoring her to work with me and help take my place. She said I'm getting old, but she has a master's degree, and she's wonderful. But anyway, this is our second year, and our purpose is to learn about all the ethnic groups in Oklahoma City through music, art, crafts, music, and exhibits. This year, we're going to have... We're proud to have the Creek Indian exhibit. It's on right now at the Black Museum. They're going to set up an exhibit there. We're also going to have Carol's Art. She... What she does is go around to all the schools with multicultural events, and she's going to set up a huge exhibit. We're going to have three days of music. We're going to have crafts for the children. It's a family event, and last year was our first year. This is our second year. We're growing, and it's small, but we expect by the fifth year that it will take off really big.
That's great. Well, good luck with this event. Look forward to it. Say anything? Again, it's September 6 through the 8th at Memorial Park, which is at 36th and Classen.
Right.
All right. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8M, I think we're good to go on this one. Salary continuation?
We are.
All right, motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I think we need executive session on this?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to move item 8N into executive session. How about a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8O, I think we do need to move into executive session on this item?
Yes.
Okay, second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8P, we also need to go into executive session.
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8Q, nothing this week, so we can have a motion to strike.
Motion to strike, second.
Cast your votes. Item is struck. Item 8R is claims recommended for denial. Is anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 8R? All right, sounds like we're good to go, how about a motion?
Move the item, second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 9? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item, second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. James, you want to get us started today? All right, Ed?
Kenny, I wanted to just ask you some questions. We've had concern, and some really brought up in a couple of different places even as recently as Friday, about diverting funds from MAPS 3 from one project to another. And there's a lot of concern out there, I think Mr. Lackman wrote in a couple of different places on Friday, that concerned that this council might take an action like that. And since it's such a short meeting, and we haven't really addressed this, I just wanted to ask you for some clarification, because you are, you're the head attorney, and you did a lot of research about how to construct the ballot for the MAPS 3 ballot. And the MAPS 3 ballot was quite different than the first MAPS ballot, correct? In what way?
Yes.
How were they different?
In the first ballot, you had all the projects listed in the ordinance, and subsequent to that, the Supreme Court has decided, it's probably getting close to about a dozen cases on a single-subject rule that cast doubt on whether or not the structure of the original MAPS was even legal, because the single-subject rule means that each ordinance has to have a single subject, and that applies to tax ordinances too. And taxation is too broad as a single, right?
Before we get into single-subject, I just wanted to ask you about, because the Oklahoma Constitution has a specific section about diverting taxes to a different purpose. That's Article 10, Section 19.
Correct.
And that reads that every act enacted by the legislature and every ordinance and resolution passed by any county, city, town, or municipal board levying a tax shall specify distinctly the purpose for which said tax is levied, and no tax levied and collected for one purpose shall ever be devoted to another purpose. Can you talk about how the Supreme Court, in two cases, McGannon and Harmon County, has basically divided that into two separate issues, and basically has said that an act levying a special tax does not have to set forth a purpose, but if a specific purpose is stated, the tax cannot be devoted to any other purpose?
Right, it's basically, it's kind of technical, but there are two clauses to that section. One says that every tax shall distinctly specify a purpose, and the Supreme Court has held that that only applies to ad valorem taxes.
Okay.
And the second clause, however, says that any tax levied for a special purpose has to be devoted to that purpose forever, basically, is how they've interpreted that, shall never be devoted to another purpose. And that applies anytime you specify a purpose for your tax, that clause applies. And Supreme Court has held that that follows the tax and all assets you purchase with the tax forever.
So, in, on the MAPS 3 ballot, we said that we were going to do a one-cent sales tax for seven years, seven months, and we were going to, the purpose was capital expenditures.
Correct.
So, you couldn't, you couldn't do it for another purpose, like operating expenses, it has to be capital expenditures.
Right.
If we had put on the ballot that the purpose was a streetcar, convention center, park, et cetera, this council would not have been able to divert it for any other purpose, according to this Article 10, Section 19.
That's correct, although you would have had to come up with a single subject where you could unite all of those various projects, and that's probably not possible to do. You'd have had multiple propositions.
So, let's talk about that. Since 1991, you said about a dozen cases, the Oklahoma Supreme Court has talked about the single-subject rule.
Right.
And there's some question about whether the single-subject rule applies to municipal ordinances. Do you think that it does?
It does, because in Title 11, on ordinances, the statute provides an ordinance may contain only one subject, and the city charter also, Oklahoma City Charter, says no ordinance shall contain more than one subject, so it does apply to Oklahoma City ordinances.
And the gentleman who files many of this, his name is Jerry Fenton, he works part-time for the city of Oklahoma City, correct?
Right.
And in 2009, there was a case where basically the state legislature passed, just said it's going to be for bonds, and then that bond had multiple purposes, like for the Native American Cultural and Educational Authority, Oklahoma Conservation Commission, and the River Parks Authority. And the Supreme Court declared that unconstitutional, because they said you can't just say it's going to be for bonds and then have it be for multiple purposes.
Right.
They then said, the issue, in explaining, the issue is whether it appears that either the proposal is misleading or provisions in the proposal are so unrelated that many of those voting on the law would be faced with an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. And it seems in reading this case law that they use that phrase over and over and over. They don't want voters to be faced with an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. What does that phrase mean to you?
It means one of the two purposes of the single-subject rule is that you can't do logrolling, and logrolling is where you, basically what they do in Congress all the time, where you combine a bunch of unrelated measures and to get different factions to support them, so you can pass the whole package. And so, for our purposes, it means you can't make the voters face an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice in regard to different projects. So, you have to find some way to connect those up where the voters, it's really kind of difficult to put into words, but as a good example is, you couldn't have put the convention center and the senior wellness centers in the same proposition. It would have been, had to be, those would have had to be in different propositions. Now, you might have been able to put the wellness centers and the park as a park and recreational facility in a single proposition, but you can't, you have to be really careful on what projects you put in a particular proposition, because you could offend the single-subject rule, and then the whole thing is thrown out.
And this is the way that you wrote it in 2009, I believe, and this is, you've disseminated this to the public, but therefore, "One must examine the proposed provisions in an ordinance proposing a sales tax to determine whether projects included therein are so unrelated that many of those voting on the law would be faced with an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. If the answer is yes, then the ordinance is likely invalid under the single-subject rule. Given this body of law, which has developed mostly since 1991, it is obvious that one must be extremely careful when trying to craft a special or limited-purpose taxing ordinance or ordinances funding multiple projects. Taxation cannot be the single subject of the ordinance, because that's too broad and expansive an approach. The subject of a special tax is going to be the special purpose the tax is limited to be spent for, for example, the zoo and the zoo sales tax, public schools and MAPS 2, or sports facilities and the sports facility sales tax. Hence, as one might suppose from reading what the Oklahoma Supreme Court has said in single-subject cases since 1991, it appears impossible to include a mandate for all of the now-proposed MAPS 3 projects in one limited purpose or special-purpose sales tax ordinance, including all the projects MAPS 1 in 1993 was very questionable. For example, mandating the fairgrounds improvement project in the same special-tax ordinance that mandates the project for five recreation centers best specially designed for senior citizens clearly could leave the supporters of each project with the unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. Therefore, our goal must be to try and unite as many projects as possible in a single proposal without getting too ambitious and thereby jeopardizing the whole thing if it turns out the Supreme Court disagrees with the way we've tried to unite them into a single ordinance and proposition." So then you had a choice, correct, that you could, if we, once we came down to eight projects, we could have, we could have voted on the eight separately, or, in your words, if you, if we must put the eight together, you said the legally safest approach, if one ordinance must be used, is to have city capital improvement, sales tax with separate resolution of intent containing all the projects.
Right.
Was there anything stopping us from having the eight projects voted on separately? On the, listing the eight projects on the ballot and having us vote on them separately?
No, you could have done it that way.
And if we had done it that way, this body would be bound to execute all those, whichever eight projects passed.
Correct.
You said that the legally, that this was the legally safest approach if one ordinance must be used, implying that, as you just said, we didn't have to do it that way. Why, in your opinion, did we do it that way?
It was just a policy decision by the council. They just decided, was put before them, and they decided that that was a good way to do it.
Do you think that the experience with maybe Andy Coats, the first time that this came around, when he, when he tried to propose six projects for downtown improvements, and some passed and some didn't, I mean, do you think that that was a factor? But it was more likely that they would pass if we bundled them all together?
Possibly. You'd have to talk to an election expert or pollster for that.
And what, what would be your opinion? Okay. Thank you. I think that, I think the law is clearly, the body of the law is clearly that the Supreme Court does not want voters faced with an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. And whether it worked in the past, that's the law. I don't want anybody to interpret this as being against MAPS, because it's not, I'm for MAPS, but I am against deception, and I am against trying to, an orchestrated attempt to circumvent the law and the will of the Supreme Court, which is clearly that we should never put the voter, give the voters an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice. If we don't like the law, then we can work through the state legislature to try and change it, just as we are with vacant abandoned buildings or preemption. If we feel that we, that voters should be able to vote on eight things at once, we should work through the legislative committee to try and change the law. But the Oklahoma Supreme Court, as I'm reading these cases, is clearly saying that they do not want voters faced with an unpalatable all-or-nothing choice.
Councilman, this is the second time in the last three days that you've suggested that this body has either been dishonest or been, created deception, or that we're incompetent, and I really take umbrage at that.
Well, maybe, not this body, but if you read, if you, if you read, listen to the press conferences and some of the comments that were made specifically, it gives the impression that the ballot had to be crafted this way. And what I want to point out is that it did not. We had a choice.
You are getting the impression that this body has been dishonest or deceitful. Thank you.
I believe that the people were intentionally misled to believing that the ballot had to be crafted in this way, when that in fact was not true.
Larry?
I'm going to make a personal observation, if I might, Mayor, about something that happened yesterday. Yesterday, I was privileged to sit in on a meeting of the Sports Arena Citizens Oversight Committee chaired by Councilman Ryan, and I think Meg was also there. This committee has met for a number of years, and these are my personal observations, which I think the council should hear. And what I'd like to encourage, Jim, is that in the next month or two, a formal presentation be made by Tom Anderson, who has been the staff member for years on this, to brief everybody on the details, because I think it is a classic example of a great MAPS project that had some client expectations. The NBA gave us some specifications of what an arena would have to match up to, whether we liked those or not, that was with the rules. There was a risk involved, because at the time that this tax was put to the people, there was no NBA team committed. There was considerable opposition from the public about this particular item, and I think it's very interesting today that I have not heard a single complaint about the arena in years. In fact, when I wear my Thunder t-shirt around as I do my athletic activities, a walk or a jog, people stop and say, "Great shirt, sir," and I think that's a testimony to its success. The project is about to wind up, and the report that I got yesterday, and Pat, you and Meg can correct me if I'm wrong, said that basically most of the project was done, with just a few details still to go. There's a $1.7 million reserve fund, additional monies that have not been spent yet, and that is in light of the fact that the anticipated revenue when the project was first started, we went through a serious recession in those days, our sales tax revenue was significantly down, and your staff, in conjunction with the consultants, Jim, were able to re-engineer both the development facility and the arena to meet the basic specs and still come in with a budget. And I think it's just a great story of a success, and I was just privileged, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for putting me on that committee. It's been going on now, I guess, Pat, for what, about five years? It seems like it must have been eternity, and I want to thank you for your leadership on that committee. And it's just a great example of a MAPS project that met all its expectations, and I think a public presentation on the details would be very warranted in the next month or two.
We'd be happy to do that. Very demanding partner with the Thunder, they had very specific requirements need to be met, and we were able to do that. But the key thing, I think, was it was a 15-month sales tax during the time of recession, and the revenues didn't come in, and we were able to modify the expectations to achieve what we need to achieve on it, which was kind of challenging, but we made it.
One of the important parts, points that Larry made, and I think it's important, is that we delivered to the public what we promised we would deliver. First-class facility at the arena and a first-class player development project in Northwest Oklahoma City. And I think that was important, despite the fact that we had a revenue shortfall. The staff did an extraordinary job as far as redesigning projects and eliminating things that would have no public impact, and we delivered, I think, a great product. And as Larry pointed out, every place I go, I hear comments about how nice the arena looks. Improvements we made out there are really nice. They talk about the south entrance particularly, how dramatic that is, and I think they really did, our consultants did a great job, in conjunction with the city staff, in developing that project properly.
Pete? All right, David?
Nelson, thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize upward transitions. I think some people will remember them as Traveler's Aid. They are having a ribbon cutting this evening at 5:30 on West Main Street for a wonderful new facility, and I'd encourage anybody that has an interest to come on out.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a lot of things to say. Notice, I do have on a very colorful tie this morning. On August the 20th, I had the great opportunity to hold, to host my first town hall meeting, and it dealt with MAPS for Kids and MAPS 3. And I want to personally thank publicly David Todd. He did a magnificent job in presenting MAPS for Kids and MAPS 3. And the town hall was actually held on his 25th wedding anniversary, so that says a lot to his dedication to our great city. We had standing room on it, and it was good to see Ward 7 to come out to hear about the good things that MAPS for Kids and MAPS 3 impact upon our city. And it was a chance for Ward 7 to give their feedback on several things with MAPS for Kids and MAPS 3, which I will share at a later date. And also, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for coming out to that town hall meeting. This past weekend, I had the great opportunity to do a police ride-along with the Oklahoma City Police Department, Spring Lake Division, and it was nice to see the good work that our police department is doing. And so, thank you, Chief City, Deputy Chief Jester, Major Jennings of the Spring Lake Division, Captain Davis. And Captain Davis came out Friday, and it was his birthday, but he found out that I was coming into the Spring Lake Division, and he came on in despite of his birthday. And also, Officer Majors for giving me a great along, a great ride-along. I did the whole third shift, so it was good to see. And also, I want to thank Station 12 of the Fire Department for a job well done. I had the opportunity to spend some time with them also this weekend. Millwood Public Schools has a new superintendent, CJ Robertson, who started almost a month ago. And it's great to see that Millwood Public Schools chose somebody who, number one, was young, who had the energy to turn around that school district. Now, buttoning to the Oklahoma City Public School District in their selection process of a new school superintendent. First of all, I would like to thank former superintendent Carl Springer for his years of service to our city and to our school district. And also, I want to say congratulations to the interim superintendent, David Lopez, who I believe is a great choice to lead the school district in an interim phase. But long-term, I do hope that the Oklahoma City Public Schools would choose someone who has an educational background in changing the inner-city school. So, again, I do believe David Lopez in the interim phase is a good choice. Hopefully, long-term, Oklahoma City Public Schools will choose a school superintendent again, who has that urban experience in turning around the school district. So, this coming up Friday, there will be a citywide service that's going to be hosted by the General Baptist State Convention. The National President, the National Baptist Convention of America, which is one of the largest Baptist, one of the largest African-American denominations, will... largest Baptist, one of the largest African-American denominations, will be holding a citywide service for tornado victims. And that service will be held at 7:30 at the Ebenezer Baptist Church located on Kelly Avenue. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Pat?
Your Honor, thank you. Just a question. We've got several street-wide new projects going on in Ward 8 right now that have taken what I think may be an extraordinarily long period of time. And the Alpha and the Omega of every conversation I have with our Public Works Department ends and begins with, within the number of days that were allowed. Should we do an analysis of the days that we allow these contractors to do a job? Are we being too liberal in our determination of how long a job may take? If we could look at some of our experiences versus some of our estimates, I think it might be helpful.
We've, we've had those conversations internal a lot. And actually, Mr. Williamson actually looked at that in an audit he did several months ago on that. And so, the answer to that is yes, we need to do that. You know that there are, there were some utility issues on the bad one out there. But it still, it impacts the neighborhoods. They don't know that necessarily, and so they're frustrated by the life of that.
They see long periods of full inactivity out there. There's nobody working and they can't understand what's happening. Well, sometimes it's a delivery problem, sometimes it's a curing problem, sometimes it's a conflict. There are a lot of legitimate reasons. However, having said that, it still seems like we allow an extraordinarily long time for our contractors to complete the projects. I understand if we cut it too short, we're going to have to pay for it, because that means they're going to have to put more people on the job, overtime work, whatever. But I do think it's something we need to look into.
And we're, we're talking about that a lot and we will do some follow-up on that for you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to follow up on that comment. I couldn't agree more with that, because I think, you know, the argument always is, well, if we shorten the time, it's going to make it more expensive. That's not necessarily true. Because all of us that sit around this horseshoe know, you get more complaints about road improvement when the improvements are being made than you ever get while they're, before they get started. The improvements, the length of the improvements probably generate more complaints for me than any other thing I get complaints about. So there are studies that show that making it go quicker, even though that you pay more, in the long run, costs the public less. I mean, in terms of gasoline, time, all those kind of things. I think we ought to look into it. I think we're, at least from the outside looking in, it appears we're far too liberal with the amount of time that we give people. I mean, I could be wrong about that, but just how it looks when you see the projects.
It could be as simple as reevaluating our policy of making them keep traffic open as we do the work. One of the things some places do is they'll close down an intersection.
But something-
They can do it all at one time. We're maintaining traffic in there and in that, there's a cost of doing that, and there's obviously a timing factor in that. So that's a factor and something we can certainly look at.
Any other items from council?
Your Honor, just one item that is on the City Manager's Report. And that has to do with the water conservation program and the variances that we are going to allow. I think the variances are important, because there have been several specific installations that have been pointed out to me that have problems confirming with, meeting our standards. And, but I wonder how this is going to be transmitted to the public.
We're working with Deborah Egan in the Water Department and with PIA to make sure that we get that information.
We use every means we have, that our, our goals will get this out to the public, because it's an important option.
I, I walked into a group of neighbors the night before last in my neighborhood and all they were talking about is how to program their sprinkler system. And so, they were, so the message is getting out and they were, they were having great angst over, over how to do that. But that was, that was the crisis of the, of the neighborhood.
All right, City Manager's Reports?
Yes. Russell Claus is here this morning to update us on the neighborhood stabilization program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've talked about this program, but I wanted to begin by acknowledging my staff who have been working on this diligently since 2008, which is when these funds were allocated to the city. Everybody in the Housing and Community Development Division has done an outstanding job, but none less than Matt Gabrielson, who is running the PowerPoint and has, through his efforts, has been able to secure more resources than I thought would be possible. And has also led to this program being recognized nationally as one of the best-run programs in the country. So I appreciate that from Matt. We also have Roland Chupak here today with Neighborhood Housing Services. And Roland has been doing most of the work for the acquisition and disposition of these properties. So I want to thank Roland. I believe Roland will have some remarks later as well. And also Bob Daley on my staff. And he and his staff have done an outstanding job of actually doing the rehab, organizing the contracting for the rehab on the houses. And the beginning slide today is owned by somebody who is also in the audience today. So just to give you the face to the program and the benefits that it derives. As I said, this program was established by 2000, in 2008 by HUD. And it was in response to really the peak of the foreclosure crisis at that point in time. We were fortunate to receive funds in several different ways, and we have allocated those funds in three different areas. One is to be able to fix up and to repurpose single-family homes for rehousing displaced and homeless families that may or may not have been made homeless because of the crisis, but are nevertheless contributing to that situation in Oklahoma City. And then also to be able to develop workforce rental housing in the downtown area, which is a huge need. And all of this helps to serve the council priority of creating thriving neighborhoods. This is a breakdown of how those funds have been allocated. We did receive a direct entitlement, because we're an entitlement community. We also received a pass-through from the state. The State Department of Commerce was the receiving entity for the majority of these funds. And so, we were able to compete for an additional allocation from the state of nearly $4 million. And because of the work of Matt, we have received a couple of repurposed allocations. These are funds that were not able to be spent within the state. And through the assistance of the local HUD office, they have been able to reallocate that back to us. So we've received another $1.2 million as a result of those efforts, because we know how to spend the money and we're getting the results that HUD was looking for. So you can see in total, and it's a significant amount of money, it's nearly $21 million. So that is, that's a lot of money to be able to invest in our neighborhoods. The projects that we've been working on, single families, I talked about, we've spent approximately $7.4 million on that. We have combined some home funds with that as well, about another $650,000 in homes. So it's for the acquisition redevelopment and then the sale of those foreclosed properties. And then multifamily, which I've got an image on here in a little bit. You've heard from us in the past on that, because we've also got brownfields money in that project. It's over in East Bricktown. It's another complicated financing project. But it would not have occurred if it hadn't been for the NSP funds. And then the Homeless Alliance Shelter in West Town, that also would not have occurred if not for these funds. It was, it was a need, been there for a long period of time. We were never able to do it. Along comes NSP. And this was perfect for meeting the purpose of the program and then meeting a longstanding need for Oklahoma City.
NSP funds and a lot of pressure from city council members to move it along, Councilman. So you're in, like, Bone and Ryan?
Yes. So certainly been a lot of champions for that particular project. This map here illustrates where the NSP funds have been allocated in the community. You can see there's a pretty wide distribution, north and south of the river, northeast, and then in the Oak Cliff neighborhood over to the southeast. So a pretty wide distribution. And if you look at the, how that impacts a neighborhood, it's pretty substantial. These are some examples of, you know, the next, examples of some of the homes that have been rehabbed through the program, just to give you an illustration of what those look like. In total, we have acquired 72 properties, of which we've sold 52. We sell about 16 homes a year. So all of the homes are in some phase of redevelopment at this point in time. And this slide here, which I believe I've shown you before, indicates the return on investment here. So the, you know, the lighter gray color there, lighter blue color on your screens is an illustration of what the pre-redevelopment value is. And then the darker blue or the, what appears to the crowd is the dark color is the increase in investment. So we've got a 70% increase in the value of these homes. And that increase in the value of those homes is not just important to those particular homes, but also assists in increasing the value of the neighborhood as a whole, which is a really important consideration. This is an image of the Bricktown project. It has changed a little bit. Since that time, it's gone through the renewal process and they've divided the property up a little bit, so it's not just one long wall on, on Main Street any longer. So it's actually a better project than even it appears here. But the value of this is that we were able to, be able to secure about 50 units of affordable housing in the Bricktown area. And that's been a difficult thing to accomplish, and NSP has allowed us to do that. And as we move forward with reprogramming the program income further down the line, we're hopeful that we'll be able to support more workforce housing in the downtown and other areas. So in terms of leverage, as you can see, for a 32% investment in, in a total of $52 million, we've been able to leverage almost 60% private funds. And a majority of that is associated with the Bricktown project. But other people are also making that investment as well. This is the West Town project. It's been open for several years now, and it continues to go from strength to strength. It is intended as a one-stop shop. I think in meeting the intent of this program, it's interesting to note that they have already been able to house 120 homeless families and 74 chronically homeless, which are the most difficult ones to, to be able to service. But the, but the number of entities that operate out there and the, and the range of services that they provide is making a significant difference in the homeless community. So there are 12 agencies out there. We see about 280, they're seeing about 280 average daily guests. They have raised themselves $1.2 million, which is what, about $600,000 a year. Dan Storm from the Alliance is very confident that they'll be able to continue that, simply because we've been able to demonstrate the benefits and the success of the program. So we've set up what will be a self-perpetuating service to the homeless. And I think we should all be very proud of that, for everybody who's participated in that particular endeavor. These are our expenditures in terms of meeting our HUD requirements. We have completely obligated, we're 100% obligated on the NSP funds, and we've spent the vast majority of that. Now we're working through the program income. And even, we've, we've got two-thirds of, the two-thirds of that has been expended as well. So we are above and beyond what the expectations of the federal government are. We have exceeded those requirements. And we are on track to, to actually be able to sell all the homes by this time next year. I think we've gone through that. So next steps, as I said, all the single-family will be completed by, by next year. The Bricktown apartments will start hopefully in mid-2014 and will be completed by 2016. They've got a lot of, a lot of site work there, a lot of brownfield remediation, and we've got some major storm sewers to be relocated there. But in the end, we're going to end up with about 350 units from what we've done already. And as we recycle the, the program income, we can expect to get more housing units. So that's a substantial addition of affordable housing units to, to the Oklahoma City market. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Russell, it's really a great report. And yeah, I think the work that you've done with your staff has just been a model for, around the nation, for how this should have, should have come together. And the number of things we've been able to do and the people we've been able to affect is huge. My memory is a little foggy on the number of homes that we actually thought we could acquire. I think your slide said 57. I think we got a lot more than we thought.
We acquired 72. That was about, we estimated we'd be able to buy about 70. So we're, we're completely on target with-
Great. That's really exciting. Thank you very much.
Just a quick-
Yeah, Pat?
Some my question. I think it's been a great project. It's really helped our, our neighborhoods that have been troubled. But one of the common denominators I've seen in troubled neighborhoods is the decay in the infrastructure available to those neighborhoods. Hot-hole streets, crumbling sidewalks, a lack of adequate lighting to make people feel safe in the new houses, new neighborhoods. And I think the city ought to refocus its efforts on trying to improve those aspects of these troubled neighborhoods, because I think it would be a real asset to the programs that the planning departments put in place to try to save these neighborhoods. And that is, we ought to devote some time, maybe money, to working on improving those infrastructure opportunities.
I think one of, to follow on with Pat's comment, and I'd like to actually ask that we could take a look at our lighting policy. Pat, we've talked about this before, but really interested in working on getting some mid-block lighting available. So if we could take a look at that ordinance, it would be really helpful.
I have talked to Eric about that.
Great. Thank you, Russ.
Mayor, this is, back to the social services things, like the homeless facility and all of us, I think, that have had, that have been here a while, have had experiences with trying to locate those facilities. Meg had with the, when North Carolina wanted to move to, to General Pershing. And when Detox moved to Linwood. And I had them with, with the two first-step facilities. And I think we've all had those kinds of experiences. What I'm, and there was a huge outcry at the time, we, the one, the one that you illustrated there. There was a big, can't do, can't do that. But historically, that has proven not to be true. I mean, that all the horror stories that we hear about them, and I suspect some of that's probably true about some of these housing developments, too. We hear all these, "Don't, don't do that." Kind of a those-people kind of an argument. But we hear that all the time. And then, once the, the facilities are there and start up and running, the problems are so minimal in relation to what would be the, the public expectation that's kind of whipped up by people that don't like the social services idea in the first place. Has there been any research done or anything that would kind of put that kind of information into a couple of pages? I'm thinking it might be helpful to us when we face these kind of projects to say, here's a list of projects that all had the same kind of objections, same kind of distractions from their location. Here's what those distractions and, and comments were then. Here's the project now, and here's what we're hearing now. It seems to me that, I can't remember any of those, that were the centers of all this turmoil that wound up being turmoil a year later. It just doesn't happen. I've, I've handled them as a councilman. I handled them as an attorney before the council during that period of time there wasn't a councilman. And I, I can't think of one facility that has not turned out okay. There was one in Davidson Ward one time, about a DHS house, that, you know, the neighbors were protesting in October and in December, they were bringing cookies to the people that, at Christmas, that were residents of that house. I just think it might be useful, too, for the council to have that kind of information organized, so that when we face those, and if, if the councilman or a woman is so inclined to be supportive, you could have a document and say, this is the history of, of that. Because they're scattered all over town. They're everything from drug and alcohol to unwed mothers to homeless, to every kind of activity, social activity you can think of. And I can't think of one that turned out to be not, not productive in the broad sense. And so, maybe you might just think about that.
I think it's an excellent idea, but I, you know, because in my ward, we've had some Oxford House.
Yes.
And they've been always complained about. And once they're in for a while, nobody knows they're there even.
Exactly.
And I think that's kind of, the factual information would be really great when we have these people complain about, well, they're considering- have these people complain about, well, they're considering this house for criminals in my neighborhood. It's not that at all. If we had some real facts, we could lay on the table, some past experience, it would be helpful.
And I know they're scattered all over the city, especially, that's a better example of what I was thinking, because they're nestled in every neighborhood in Oklahoma City practically. But the bigger ones, like Detox, or the First Step facility, or North Care's facility on General Pershing, those are the ones that catch more attention, because they come down here for rezoning. Oxford houses at least don't have to be rezoned. But this might be a tool for us when we try to work with those kind of things, to have a document where we could say, this is our history with this.
Pete, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the Salvation Army right now, is another example. We've got this fabulous campus going in at 10th and Pennsylvania, which will greatly enhance their pleasant town neighborhood.
The stories that you hear, our history has never been like the stories that you hear on the front side. At least it hasn't been in my experience. And they're all over town.
There's always a little fear of the unknown, and I think that actually works well with the operators of most of these facilities, because they do take extra care to ensure that those fears are not realized in the community. So I would agree with your sentiments.
I don't think you'd eliminate the fears, but at least we'd have some document and say, this is what's happened in the past, we've dealt with this, and we're not doing this. You're not being treated any different than people all over the city, and this has been our success rate. And it's been good. I mean, I think the document would show we've been very successful in doing it.
I'll certainly be happy to do that. And I did want-
Just a thought, doesn't have to be number one on your list.
Larry?
Back to the predecessors, we're going way, way back in history. John Dugan, John Dugan took me to Washington DC to a seminar on something called Inclusionary Zoning.
Yes.
And I have not heard anything about that approach since then. Is that still being used around the country, or is it?
It is. I mean, we're trying to approach that more on a voluntary basis. And in the downtown area, for example, where it's more appropriately applied, we're having discussions with the Alliance for Economic Development about the allocation of TIF funds to be able to support those same objectives without necessarily making it a requirement by changing the zoning. Inclusionary zoning, for those who don't know, is including an affordable housing component into housing, into market rate housing. So we are trying to target that. I'm not, I don't know if it would work in this market. Would be, may be difficult to do. It certainly applies well on eastern, west coast markets where the housing prices are so high. So I think we can, I mean, we will continue to try and move towards achieving the same goals of inclusionary housing, but with an incentive-based approach.
Any other questions for Russell?
I did want to point out that Roland Chupak here, and the owner of one of the houses is here, and I think they would like to make some brief comments about their participation in the program, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. I'm Roland Chupak, and I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services here in Oklahoma City. And we're the responsible chodo for the single-family part of the NSP program. And I have to tell you, it has been an exciting opportunity to be able to participate in this program. As a chodo, we do build affordable housing in Oklahoma City. And one of the responsibilities that I have as Executive Director is not just simply to oversee the program and the success of it, but to hand the keys to the families who have purchased these homes. And I get incredible joy out of doing that, because it just brings great satisfaction to me personally, as well as professionally, to see families become homeowners. Because as you know, homeownership is an incredible opportunity that unfortunately, people around the world don't have the same opportunity. But here we do. And it helps families to become taxpayers through real estate taxes and so forth, and to be responsible consumers, and to also build equity. And we've enjoyed quite a good economy here, particularly when it comes to homeownership. So it's been a privilege for us to be able to implement this program, and to work with the city planning department, and Russell, and Matt, and the staff there to make sure that this takes place. And I'd love to take the time this morning to tell you about each and every family who has purchased one of the NSP homes, but I won't do that. I'd just like to tell you about a couple and introduce to you, so you can put faces and names, and have an idea about these families. One family that came to mind in particular was, or is Diana Wade. Diana Wade moved to Oklahoma City not too long ago. She is not here with us today, but never thought she could own a home. Matter of fact, she was told back in another state from which she moved, that not only could she not own a home at the time of her application, but she might as well forget about the idea. She would never be capable of owning a home. So when she moved to Oklahoma City, she was looking for a rental property. We took her through the intake process that we do, and we began to show her that, well, what you were told wasn't literally true, that this would be an opportunity for you to own a home. And so she successfully became a part of the NSP family and purchased an NSP property. And then Jay Hallmark, Section 8 to homeownership participant, used the Section 8 program for his housing needs, but there again, through the work of that program, was able to purchase an NSP home that was close to the bus routes, close to the doctors that he needed to see. And so he is extremely happy about that. But the two people I want to introduce to you this morning is Nelson Crescente and Nicole Chastain. Would you just stand up? I'd like to recognize these two as well. The Crescente family wanted to be close to their grandchildren. Now, if you've got grandchildren, you know how that is, you want to be near them, and you want to be able to send them home as soon as you can. Well, maybe not as soon as you can, but they have limited resources to invest in a home, but indeed discovered neighborhood housing in the NSP program and purchased one of our properties in the program. And of course, the Chastains, two-income family, working hard. As you know, it takes more and more and more income to make it today. But the NSP program allowed them, as a family, and a new family, to become homeowners, and to invest not only in themselves, but invest in our community, and to use this program in this way. So I wanted to recognize these two as representing all of the folks who have participated in this program. And again, to thank you for your confidence in our organization, and approving our contract and extending it, allowing us to see it all the way through. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Nelson Crescente. I live in 2317 Southwest 47, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma Cemetery 119. I left a couple years. I was the privileged, by the porch of this house from the city, and I just wanted to thank you for what you've done, and I'm very happy for you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to sort of speak on behalf of this program. There was a point that I wanted to bring up that maybe people don't think about, is not only the historic value of the homes in the neighborhood, but these homes are made to be energy efficient. I have the security and the peace of mind knowing that, due to the standards that must be met for these homes, my house has been tested and treated for lead and also other type of things. So I just wanted also to point out the importance of that. And if I had bought this house on my own and not through this program, you know, the likelihood of me being able to make some of these conversions is very small. So I greatly appreciate that, having a three-year-old. So I wanted to point that out as well. So thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Jim?
On the sales tax question report for August, just want to point out that after a little bit down month in July, that the August check is back to within a percent of our target. A lot of factors are still out there, but sequestration, I think, was a factor earlier in the summer. And I think the dialing back of sequestration on some of the furloughs is probably helping a little bit, when they cut those days back for most folks in half, and some people it was eliminated. And then, you know, typically, we do have some additional revenues that come after a storm. And because of the tornadoes that we had earlier this year, generally, there is some construction dollars involved in that. So I anticipate that that's part of what we'll see this month, and maybe the next month or two.
But Jim, the memo talks about a large $1.1 million multi-year refund. What is that?
We don't, no, that's confidential, it's a tax commission.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager? All right, citizens to be heard. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes. Joe Sarge Nelson?
Morning, Mayor, Council. Joe Sarge Nelson, I've been here before. I had planned on coming up here and delivering this particular speech. Right now, it's very treacherous, and I choose at this time not to do it. You'll hear about it very soon. It names dates, times, and places, and I'm not right now, the only thing I'm on the attack on right now is, this came out of the Daily Oklahoman. The neighborhood, which is very distinct I grew up in, if our transit system, which was in front of this board a couple of months ago, gave you the report and told you they had quite a few complaints, making reference to the fact that they can't reach the outlining areas where people want to ride the bus. My period of thinking is this: if our system transit worked properly, this would work. $134 million, which I've been at all of the streetcar meetings, two at the library, one at Civic Center, and the one that was here just the other day. They say we have $134 million dedicated to this thing. People are not being told the whole story. What about all the land it's going to cost to buy to put this in here? That's not even included in that price. The estimated price to operate and maintain it is $3 million. Well, when I got there with my pencil, looking at it, and all this sort of stuff I'm looking at here, it's going to go from Bricktown, across Midtown, up past Brown's Bakery, over to San Anthony Hospital, and right back down. And that particular area right there, there is nobody that even lives there anymore, hardly. And as far as business, there's a hospital. They have their own parking garage, all the facilities, there's medical. It doesn't go anywhere. It's no useful purpose. And we're going to turn it right around. And rumor had it as of yesterday, and I'm going to ask this from Mr. Couch, if there's any truth to the rumor, that to ride this rail system, is it going to cost anybody anything, or is it free to be ridden on?
You know, I don't know if we've come to the bottom line on that. Typically, there is a small cost associated with it.
Okay, well, I was informed yesterday that the rail system to ride on it is free. And if that's the case, how does the taxpayers get any of their money back? I have a lot of questions about this. It goes nowhere, it's short-lived, and the timeframe is very short. And I just don't see this thing here. If our rail system worked, or our transit system worked, I would go for this. This rail system should be going to the places like Edmund, Norman, Moore, where people can get some value and use out of it. If you all look at this real close, it doesn't go anywhere. These streets are all dead. I mean literally dead. Most of these streets right here are in construction four times out of the year, every year, for whatever reason. San Anthony Hospital does a lot of it. It's a very nice hospital, one of the oldest in Oklahoma City, and one of the most reputable. But 99% of their personnel, including the doctors, have a parking garage right across the street, in McBride Clinic. Everybody has wheels. Nobody's going to ride this thing. For the first couple of months, it's going to be a free ride, it's going to be enjoyable, it's going to be a novelty. And then it's going to wear off, and where are we at now? It's going to be paying $3 million to run it, but nobody's going to be riding on it. One of the ladies told me, came down to my office, and told me, she works out here at Wilmington Park, and I won't give her her name. She said she had several people come out there before they even opened, and had a big, huge meeting about the rail systems coming out there and dropped the people off and bringing them back. You know how many people have heard different stories where these rails are supposed to go? That they're not really going there? I just wish the true facts of this thing would come out to the people, so they could find out what's really going on with it. I asked once before, suspend the funding till we get all the story. And right now, we're not getting anything, except it's going there, it's been approved, and it's going to cost the city $134 million. I want to know where the land's being purchased from. There's a lot of money there. And $2.5 million to operate it?
Sarge, thanks.
Well-
Roy Stafford?
Good morning, Ms. Salley. Good morning to members of the council. This is going to be brief. Lynn LaGuire, I contacted her by phone this weekend. Unbeknownst to me, she's now an appointed judge. And the same display that we have here is what I went through yesterday. I'm not intimidated at all by anybody. The man that puts his pants on two legs at once strikes fear in my heart. During a couple of conference calls, it was asked of me why I was wearing rosaries. I'm ecumenic. I'm a true trial, I'm a true child of Christ, not to be played with, not to be taken lightly. The sidewalk at 23rd Mountain for King, the reason I have so much knowledge of ADA is because I'm disabled. Also, I have a family member that is an ADA attorney. The address of the law firm, Mr. Couch, 1701 Pennsylvania Avenue, a marital partner of, relative of mine, is employed there, along with a few constituents. And I'm sure they have people at the White House, as friends or whatever. My public service package, the first person to endorse it is Chief Ed Welsh, the oldest acting chief in Oklahoma City area. He, in conversation, discussed it with Chancellor Born. I have talked with, I have communicated with people on Governor Fallon's staff, Rebecca Frazier, constituent service director, Cody Inman. You're to hold up. We are offering you the opportunity to put this in motion, because, to quote Chancellor Born, I didn't hear this directly, it's the best idea he's heard since melted cheese on bread. There is no one that has attempted to stir up the moral makeup of men in this town, other than the idea that I came up with. That's the only way to improve the relationship between our law enforcement communities and our community. We had an incident last night where, in my opinion, the officers fired his weapon a little bit too soon, because he didn't know, he didn't know that he was shooting at a store owner. These issues is what I'm about. And I'm fit to cut it off, because if you send, don't send a friend to intimidate me, because that's a friend from 2005. Sergeant Gary Knight, POI, I contacted him by phone to inform him- Sergeant Gary Knight, PRI, I contacted him by phone to inform him that the female that perished in the house fire two thousand and ten, Christmas Eve, last name was Barr, she was the wife of retired Oklahoma City police officer, never mentioned. We got sideways, we don't talk. Mike Clicker, I contacted him a couple of days ago. Mike and I have known each other since the streets. We've never had bad, bad anything. I told Mike a quote from one of the people involved in the conference call, that we need to go beyond the Caucasian people in Oklahoma City and put this down. Mike told me, don't talk to him. Don't call him. And when I saw him in headquarters, he said, don't you speak to him? So it's like this: you can stay with the old guard, or you can roll with the new guard. But the new guard is going to put down these public service announcements, and that's going to happen. You can do one of two things, Mayor Cornett. You can assist us, or you can do what they refer to as commit political suicide, because it's going to be difficult for them.
And we have executive session. We'll be back.